All right, we're gonna get this started. It is seven forty-five. Sorry folks, it's fifteen minutes late. It is August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. We will be opening the West Liberty City Council meeting. Present our council members Dana Dominguez here, Ashley Smith.
Yeah.
And Karen McFerran.
Yes.
Here I am. Not here is Councilman Omar Martinez. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Oh.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved, three zero. We will move to the approval of the consent agenda. However, item, item C, the city clerk treasurer, treasurer report for June twenty twenty-two needs to be tabled because there was a software issue in the office, so it wasn't able to be completed. So do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Second to. Sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that amended agenda is, is approved, three zero. We will move to mayoral appointments. Katie Brooks, are you here? To, to the Board of Adjustments? I don't know, do I need to do a swearing in or anything, or just be like, hey lady?
You just.
Hey, welcome to West Liberty. We're really glad you're joining the board.
Thank you.
So, um, and do we need to vote on these? Yeah, we have culture lotion for appointments.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Katie Brooks to Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Can we all say?
Just thought I'd get.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so welcome to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you for serving.
Your first meeting will be September first, and then we'll get that information set out.
I mean, we're already got your stuff.
Yeah.
Welcome to the team.
Here, your, your drink is in the mail. Um, so we'll move, uh, so we are starting a new board for the Sister Cities Project that is being, uh, being led by Ken Brooks, who is here and some other members of our community. And I'd like to appoint council members Karen McFerran and Ashley Smith to that board. Um, do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so council members McFerran and Smith will be on the Sister Cities Board effective August sixteen, twenty twenty-two. We will move into the public hearing to amend stormwater utility ordinance. Do I have a?
I have a motion to open public hearing.
For a second?
Exactly.
Okay. And this is a roll call, correct?
Good.
Uh, do we have any discussion? Uh, council members, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so the, the.
Yeah.
Uh, the, oh, the public hearing to amend stormwater utility ordinance is open. Um, Dave, would you like to?
Right now, you're basically just taking the comments from.
From public.
Anything else?
No, we're not opening the floor to you, dude.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to comment? I know there's been a lot of comments, you know, just around town about some of this, so.
Man, Mary, do not show anyone on Zoom.
Okay. Anybody on council have anything to?
I haven't received any correspondence.
Nope, no one said anything about it.
And this is just what kind of what Sherry explained in the last. Count, I don't know, Ashley, if you were.
I read it online.
Okay, yep, so it doesn't raise the rate, it's just how it's worded in the ordinance.
Yeah, and just so everyone is aware, it's not a utility that is attached to like our electric or our water. This is separate. This is a completely separate utility itself. Cause I know a lot of people were saying, I only have electric or I only have water. Why do I have this? It doesn't have to do with your water and your electric. This is a completely different thing for the actual stormwater itself.
So how do you? I just curious. It's based on, um, like on all residential laws, they have the same fee.
Yeah.
And then our commercial and our industrial spaces, our engineers went through a process. Excuse me, where they calculate an equivalent, equivalent residential unit based off space. And so if it's, it could be a fact, you know, it could be ten times, it could be fifteen times, it could be eight, but they did all that calculation for the city provider that staff would prevent. And we found that, I think staff has found a couple of things that, uh, that were errors and we've made some changes on those, but very few changes so far. There were a couple that like the school district, they had, they kept a, a separate piece just for their electric side. And, and we decided that really was part of their overall thought. So there were some minor tweaks Sherry and Rita have been working on, and they've had a good shot taking care of that.
Um, so are we ready to close? We have a motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Your second.
Uh, council. Yes.
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 Okay.
The public hearing is closed. We will now move to vote on ordinance zero two, two zero, two, two, zero, eight, one, six, amending the stormwater utility ordinance twenty twenty-one, Title VII, Chapter twelve, stormwater utility, one through twelve, billing and collection, first reading.
Motion to amend, uh, pass ordinance, amending stormwater utility.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
My council member.
Yes.
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 Okay, all right, that passes three zero. We will now move to open the public hearing to amend the golf ATV, UTV ordinance. Do I have a motion to open?
Motion to open the hearing. A second.
Second, okay.
Council member.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, that is open. This is per the changes from the state, correct?
Yes.
So can you go over?
Basically, the ordinance that was approved by the city, the city council still over a year ago required licensing requirements for golf carts, ATVs and UTVs. And they, and they put together a whole, a whole ordinance kind of had to go through an inspection permit, have it permitted to, to be able to access some streets. The state passed a new law that allows ATVs and UTV, UTVs to use city streets, county roads, and some, some highway routes or access. Um, but there are no requirements for inspections or permits. You can't charge them a permit. So chief went through this, he basically took out all of the references relating to ATV and UTV. Now, the one change that chief didn't make, um, and that is something that you can decide if you like, or, or you want to change the, that I'm aware of is that we originally allowed folks sixteen and older that had a driver's license to operate a golf cart. State law requires eighteen-year-olds for ATVs, UTVs. So chief, uh, in his draft back to bring before you, uh, has changed that from sixteen to eighteen. But he said he is, you know, he'll honor whatever, you know, council wishes to be with that. That was his recommendation.
The other piece that, um, the wording to be that, um, golf carts cannot travel on, uh, Columbus Street, but they have, they are permitted to cross.
Okay. What do we think about the sixteen to eighteen? Sixty-year-old me is going one.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, if the state says eighteen.
Yeah, I'm.
Why not just make it eighteen?
Just make it eighteen.
So we like to.
Doing eighteen. Is a golf cart, a golf cart substantially less dangerous than an ATV or UTV?
I think so. An expert in the room is shaking his head.
I think, I think what, um, what the chief was referring to is that six, between sixteen and eighteen, you're, you're on a temporary license.
Intermediate.
Sure. And so therefore then if there was an issue where they got into trouble with the golf cart, that could impact their.
It's a good point.
License.
Right.
Yeah.
So. So that sixteen-year-old, then you.
Who crashed a golf cart at Disney World.
Yes.
And we had a situation where sixteen-year-old doing donuts in the cart and ended up putting the cart and he was hurt pretty bad.
Okay, yeah. Well, so.
We need to amend that.
No. Chief had, had made that change to eighteen in the draft.
Okay. Any public comments on this? Okay. Um, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close here. Second, second.
Uh, council.
Yes.
Yes, yes, all right, the public hearing is closed. We will now vote on zero, three, two, zero, two, two, zero, eight, one, six. Ordinance amending the golf ATV, UTV ordinance twenty twenty-one by removing ATV, UTV from the chapter to golf carts only, first reading.
Um, motion to amend golf ATV, UTV ordinance.
Second.
Perfect.
Uh, Councilman Smith?
Yes.
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 Okay. That has, oh, I don't see that. That passes, uh, three zero. And we will move on to item six, vendor voucher claims. Um, moment, do we have a motion to approve the vendor voucher claims list in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents?
Motion to approve vendor vouchers claims list.
Need a second?
Let's second.
Right, and any questions from council? Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the vendor voucher claims are approved, uh, three zero. We will move on to the public comments and our correspondence. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to no more than two minutes. Do we have any public comments? Ken? Okay, um, does anybody from city council want to share anything that they have received?
I have not received anything, but I have my new email, so.
You will.
I, I, I don't think I have anything. I don't think I received anything.
Um, uh, city manager or clerk?
I've received nothing to.
I have.
Oh, nothing.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Lee, go ahead. I don't want to cut you off.
Received nothing.
I do want to say there is, oh, there's been a lot of theft in town lately, so just make sure you're not leaving packages on your porches and, um.
Has some storage stuff got broken into.
Yeah, and some storages were broken into, and I remember another community member saying that her son's storage got broken into in West Branch, so it might be, um, you know, kind of in the air for theft right now, so. And I saw that on, on, you know, no, go ahead, Sharon.
I wanted to let everyone know that we got our first set of Colander indoors engraved. Um, and the family's actually gonna be putting ashes in it sometime this week, so.
Well done.
Grateful that we were able to get it and we did reach out, and they actually came into City Hall and talked to me, so I picked him up last Thursday, brought him back, and they put him up on Friday, so we do have our first two over there.
Wonderful.
Hey, um, if there's nothing else, uh, comments, we will, we have nothing in old business today. Um, we should move to new business. Uh, resolution two zero, two, two, zero, eight, one, six, dash, one, one, a resolution to appoint city council vacancy by appointment effective January first, twenty twenty-four. So this basically is talking like the same process we just went through for council members.
It's the same process, uh, to replace councilman Zacharias. We do have the extra time between our next meeting. Uh, we just want to make sure that we meet our requirement of not less than four or more than twenty days, so.
And then hopefully not with the, ooh, for you guys last.
So, um, you know, if, if you want to do the same process, we can put something out, uh, you know, letting individuals that are interested in being considered for that position, much like Ashley and Mike Price and, uh,
Vanessa.
And Vanessa had done last time in Fall Dallas. You know, we can do that again if, if that's what the council wants. And we'll try to keep that window maybe a shortened period, so then if you want to have it, um, council do, you know, work session on it again like you did to kind of come to your decision as to who you want, so we can, you know, to have it down in a you know, the first or second meeting in September. I guess I'll, I'll leave it up to you as how soon that you want to do that, but that will kind of dictate where we publish that before nor, nor less than four or more than.
Would we have time to do a work session before our next one and then two? But then we have to post, right? Sorry.
You could set, um, like you did before, you could set a, oh, session. It doesn't have to be before the council meetings. Is that what you're asking?
I mean, so if we talked about something, um, like a day or two before the next council meeting, would we have enough time to, to, to appoint that person that day, like the two days later? Do we, is there like timeframe?
No, it's, it would be based on our publication, so I'm, I'm assuming that what will happen is, uh, that has been published, it hasn't?
No, they have to pass.
Pass resolution, so if we can get that published for Friday, you know, then that would fall within that core and twenty for the next meeting, so if we, you know, take applications for a week. But that would push us right up to.
I would recommend your second meeting.
Second meeting, yeah.
Okay.
But we can go out and we can have an application period for a couple of weeks if you want, and then between that first and second, we'll you can decide who you, who you would like to appoint to that seat as your second meeting. And we'll track our publication base based on that.
Okay, so we have a work session on September twentieth, and then vote for who do we choose that same day?
We may have a work session prior to.
Prior to.
You can do that prior to, like even the week before.
But sometime before that second meeting in September.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so we are, we are in favor of the same process as last, that by appointment. Um, any other questions or comments before we vote?
Councilman.
Yes.
I know, it's really cold in.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so, um, that passes three zero to, to appoint.
Man, who was our motion in our second, I'm sorry.
Um, motion and second, motion was McFerran and second was.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, we will move on to resolution two zero, two, two, zero, eight, one, six, dash, one, two. A resolution for reimbursement to Matt House for matching grant project in the amount of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. They have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second, okay, motion by Smith, second by McFerran. Um, any comments?
I would just say this was another one of the city's, uh, economic development grants. Matt House, the owner of New Strand Theater. He had a new work put on his facility, and, uh, he probably got all his paperwork submitted to us, and we're ready to reimburse him his fifty percent.
Great.
Um, any other questions? Okay. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Why are you just grabbing me? Okay, so that, that posted, that passes three zero.
It's cold in here.
It is freezing, and I have like a warmer.
There's an ice box in here.
Um. Sorry, okay, so we'll move on to item C, resolution two zero, two, two, zero, eight, one, six, dash, one, three. A resolution to approve city of West Liberty salary wages for this school year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. We have a motion. Motion to approve. Have a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have, uh, Dominguez' motion and Smith's second. Uh, any, uh, comments, conversation?
She puts in.
Nope. And I just add, um, council member Dominguez, um, she reached out and she asked some really good questions. Um, regarding EEO, and, um, I did send an email off, uh, to them. Uh, again, I just based on what I've learned through the HR and the process of identifying equal opportunity or equal employment and wages and, um, so, but I'm still waiting to hear back from them, and I'll make sure that we provide that information. Um, the other thing is, is that, um, the, um, city manager and I'll have to be going into this year, it's gonna need to have another wage evaluation. And how that's done is we do, uh, again, we'll do comparable city surveys. Um, I, it is difficult because we have a unique city with, um, the wastewater treatment and the electric is a large utility. And then we also have a smaller staffed city who individuals do multiple jobs. So again, I think it will be good to go through that exercise and then, um, review that with council. Um, after the first three years, we're headed into the next budget and company.
Yeah.
Um, likewise, um, organizational chart and job descriptions will ask to make sure we have all of those updated and completed so they can be reviewed at the same time.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, uh, that's, uh, um, any other questions before we vote?
So that evaluation is something that Ian and Katie does, and that's it, like we don't, I don't, as a council, we don't have to do the wage evaluation thing. So you said it's the two of you?
No.
We, we don't evaluate you, is that what?
No, no, I'm telling you, do I have to help with that? Or is that just a thing that the two of you take care of together? Like, do we all have to do it?
Um, so for the, for the city manager and the city clerk, um, the council as a whole will go through and, um, they'll complete what they want to have as a part of the evaluation.
Okay.
And then the mayor, then collectively will go, then do that, and then again, that's entirely up to the mayor.
Um, okay.
Like, how, what kind of format to do? So typically the format is, um, upon the employee, employee can request a closed session to go through their evaluation evaluation with the council as a whole and the mayor.
Okay.
Or they can have an open, um, most employees are gonna ask to have a closed session, um, just to allow some more guidance and, and, and you know, comfortable discussion about things that need to be improved or where things are going from a confidential personnel.
And a complete evaluations for the department has an exception of lead, and then all the department has their responsibility for completely evaluations of the staff that work on it.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so for the wages, uh, care how you work.
Yes.
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 Okay. That passes, uh, three zero. Um, item D, event request for the Saint Joseph's Festival, September fourth, twenty twenty-two. Florida for West Sixth Block and North Clay Block from nine AM to six PM.
Motion.
Second, second. Any discussion? This is just outside the church, I believe, just that block right outside.
Right, the, the downtown, um, the, uh, the festival that normally is downtown.
Right.
Moving it to the front of the church.
Right, right.
Yep, and then I think along Clay Street too, is that quarter. Other, yeah, yeah, my understanding, brother, is the, um, organizers would like to, um, give that a try and see how that, you know, how that will work and.
Great. Oh. And this is just a consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to reports. Is Leo still on?
I am. I, I would like, the only report I have today is, um, the well number two report, report that I provided about two weeks ago. We met with city staff today. I'm gonna make some changes and then we'll get a final report, probably change the recommendation a little bit, and we'll give that to you at the next council meeting.
City staff minutes? Oh, sorry, Leo, I'm sorry, were you finished?
That's all I had, any questions?
Anybody, any other council members have questions or mayor on any of the staff members? We've been visiting, seen a lot of street work around town.
Um, again, I just add, so our, um, communications director has been working, um, to, he, he put out another, Jacob put out another, uh, news update, um, just to go over the council, and then also he's been working on additional educational materials, um. It's not as been as popular as my chicken story, but I just say we've got some of that, but. I just would like to, um, as far as I know, we've had several, um, utility customers, um, utilizing the additional extension. So as far as I know, that's, that's going well, and, um, and we've also, um, I think working with a few to establish a contract agreement. And, um, and then we have some others that, um, we're meeting with individually, so we can go over that, that piece of it. I know we had talked about trying to put together, um, the educational piece of going through and breaking down, and, um, just, it was busy this last couple of weeks with bill processing, but it's still on our, it's still on our radar to get that, that done for the community, so.
Thank you.
And I guess one other thing that we're working on is we, and I'm spoke with our, uh, microcandidates, and we've had solar companies have been approaching our residents and telling them to go ahead and get solar hooked up, but we don't have an intervention agreement yet. So we're gonna do some education, but I, I visited with Verbal, uh, V H N G this week. Um, got the, uh, the interconnect agreement that, uh, will be our final agreement. I put it out to add it to Terry for comments, and if everything, uh, looks good to them, we'll be bringing that to the council area at one of the next two meetings to, to get that approved, and that will allow, uh, folks in town, if they want to, um, add solar to their property, that's something that they will do, we have to have.
That's right.
But we, we're gonna, I'm just gonna work with Jake and probably tomorrow, just to let people know that, you know, don't, don't, cause I don't, they've been out pushing solar, and I hate to see people invest money and tell us it's done, but once it's in place, then we'll be good.
So. And one last thing, um, I also wanted to, oh, forget it, I lost my thought.
Um, I wanted to say that I, I really appreciate the city West Liberty rundown. I think it's really well done. I think it would have a more equitable impact if we were able to also publish it in Spanish. I know that that adds another step to the process, but I wonder if there might be community members who would be willing to help translate it. Um, I just, I mean, it, it seems like we're only, we're only doing the recap for half of our population if it's only in English, and it's just, I, I, not just, I don't want to make more work for somebody else, but I wonder if there would maybe be volunteers that would help to translate it so we could publish it in both languages.
Jacob, I know you're online. Is that something that you were planning to do?
Yes, it can be done. Um, if someone in City Hawk can help me with that, it's more than possible, I believe.
Maybe.
Unfortunately, it doesn't go word for word. It's a good idea, but.
Unfortunately, we'll do it.
I wonder, right? I'm volunteering, the council member Martinez. For missing the meeting. But.
Yeah, I mean, and that's certainly always our goal is to try to, uh, make sure that we're providing in both language, but, um, we're still working towards some of those things, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
Oh, the council meeting, sorry. So I have con, I spoke with, um, the community center here, and we're going to schedule two more meetings, our, our two meetings in September, um, and Ally's on here, uh, though the, the room, the, the renovation's still undergoing, um, some things, and I don't know if she wants to talk about it. But, um, but then also what we've done is we're currently working on the space that was going to be utilized as the council chambers at City Hall. So we are working to get that set up. It's going to be small, um, but again, it's, you know, it's, it's the space that we have, and if we run into a situation where we have to go to a larger venue, then we'll, we'll make arrangements for that. But I think in, um, I think from talking to staff and folks, it'd be good to get back to City Hall and, and having those meetings there, so we're gonna work to, to get that accomplished, and Ally, I don't know, how is your renovations coming? She's back.
They're supposed to be done on, um, at the, by the end of September. So. That's my hope.
We, we know how that goes at City Hall. Welcome back, Ally.
Thank you.
Now that's something.
Um, committee meetings, anything to report that?
That was.
That was kind of.
Jennifer, that was kind of part of the work session where we're, only I kind of gave an update of where we were and kind of a committee recommendations.
Okay, the, the task force too, we didn't meet, um, yesterday just because of scheduling, so we're gonna meet next week instead on Monday. Okay, and I, and I have, um, a new list of, I think, a finalized list of committees, uh, that I'll be sending around to everybody to making sure, making sure it's okay. Um, again, with Omar not here, I want to run it what I've voluntold him to do too, uh, before I send it to everybody, but that'll be coming, um, and, yeah.
And then we can put that on the next agenda if you have that all.
Yeah, yeah, we can, hopefully, so, um, do I have a, anybody? Yeah, we can, hopefully, so, um, do I have a, anybody, anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned.